America's Town Meeting of the Air.
Town Meeting tonight, Town Meeting tonight. Bring your questions to the old town hall. What's the question? Should we plan for social security? What about social security? Down to the old town hall is talking over. Town Meeting tonight, Town Meeting tonight.
America's Town Meeting of the Air welcomes you to historic Town Hall in New York City. By way of acknowledgement, to your fine response to these Thursday evening meetings, we are going to read excerpts from a few of the thousands of enthusiastic letters that have been received. Mrs. Norma Douglas Dorr of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania writes:
I want to shout over the fine broadcast last night. The speeches and answers to questions seem to me superb.
From the Reverend Charles Lyons Show of Dayton, Ohio, we hear:
I wish to commend you for this excellent program. And I am planning to make the speeches material for a Town Hall Meeting of the Air echo service on Sunday next.
From Mr. B.A. Whitney, Director of the Educational and Research Bureau of the Brotherhood of Railroad Trainmen, Cleveland, Ohio:
It is programs of this character that inspire the American people with a new confidence in the existence of freedom of speech and the efficacy of our democracy.
From Mr. Frank H. May of Dubuque, Iowa: This is the only sane way of ever rising to a higher civilization, by laying the cards openly on the table and letting reason be the judge. From Mrs. Claude C. Chapel of Amherst, Nova Scotia:
Your programs are one of radio's finest features. Long life and more power to you.
From Ulysses L. Perry, Pensacola, Florida:
Your Town Meeting programs are an outstanding radio feature in this territory. It's probably the most widely discussed of the current radio programs.
And here is one from Mr. D.M. Hall, Tampico, Mexico.
May I take this opportunity of expressing my enjoyment in listening to the Town Hall programs and my hope that these broadcasts will be continued indefinitely.
From Mr. A.L. Barnes, Architect of Oak Park, Illinois:
I was almost asleep when this discussion started, but before it finished, I was pacing the floor, wishing I could say something.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes, and thank you, one and all. Indeed, we wish there were time to hear from all of our friends of the radio audience. On January 9th next, we will have a representative of the radio audience on the program. And now, tonight's meeting. Our speakers will be presented to you by our moderator, Mr. George V. Denny Jr., founder and director of America's Town Meeting of the Air, Mr. Denny.
Good evening, neighbors. Those letters certainly do our hearts good. The League for Political Education and the National Broadcasting Company are deeply indebted and grateful to the thousands of American citizens who have written to express their approval of these Town Meetings and to offer their suggestions. At our meeting last week, we came very near treading on the subject of our meeting tonight, which is, should we plan for social security? Let me explain at once that this is not a debate. It is a joint discussion in which two qualified authorities approaching the problem from two widely different viewpoints discuss the subject. As we have said before, these meetings are conducted in the interest of the welfare of the whole American people. And in presenting two or more conflicting views at the same time during the same hour, we believe a highly useful and constructive purpose is served. We have the privilege this evening of hearing from the United States Secretary of Labor, the Honorable Frances Perkins, whose career and achievements mark her as one of America's most distinguished women. Our second speaker, Mr. George S. Sikolsky, has attained fame in two fields, as an authority on far eastern affairs and as a consultant in the field of industrial relations. Mr. Sikolsky is the author of Labor's Fight for Power. It is now my pleasure and my privilege to present the Honorable Frances Perkins, United States Secretary of Labor.
Chairman, and my friends, it was with some satisfaction that I heard Mr. Denny say just before the air became available to us that he was certain that all the people in this audience understood the rules and regulations under which this discussion was conducted. And it was satisfactory and reassuring to me because Mr. Sikolsky and I don't understand the rules and Mr. Denny has just been telling us out back what they were and final whispered instructions have been given to us. So if I break the rules, I shall have to ask to be forgiven under the plea that I have not had enough instruction from Mr. Denny. However, I am delighted to be here tonight and to have this opportunity of discussing with you the question, should we plan for social security? And certainly, that question deserves the thought and consideration of all intelligent people in the United States. As the chairman of President Roosevelt's Committee on Economic Security, upon which the report of the present Social Security Act is based, and from my own experience of some fifteen odd years in studying this question in its various phases, my answer to the question will be unreservedly in the affirmative. We've got, of course, to define what we mean by security, I suppose. And the dictionary seems to lean heavily to the conception that security means reasonable freedom from fear and anxiety, with confidence of safety, some of them throw in, and one dictionary adds, assured. The security, therefore, of the men, women, and children of this nation, when we consider it in terms of its economic and social aspects, is, it seems to me, life liberty, one of the chief objectives of our association as a nation. And it is embraced within those famous words of the Declaration of Independence, "Life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." For life and the pursuit of happiness in modern America certainly include the conception of economic security. Without that, in other words, become mere forms and abstractions. And to attain these objectives under modern ideas of what these ancient abstractions really mean in modern society requires forecourt by individuals, forecourt by society itself, together with organization and systematic performance along the lines of an agreed-upon plan. Organized foresight, in other words, is necessary both for society and for individuals, and for both in common, to overcome the modern hazards, the modern economic hazards, as they afflict the individual. In modern society, requires forecourt by individuals, forecourt by society itself, together with organization and systematic performance along the lines of an agreed-upon plan. Organized foresight, in other words, is necessary both for society and for individuals, and for both in common, to overcome the modern hazards, the modern economic hazards, as they afflict the individual. The modern conception of the possibilities and needs for a good life is, of course, much larger today than it used to be. And today's necessity for a group of community planning is obvious and striking because world transportation, communications, the radio itself, machinery have served to reduce time and space as factors of life and have made cooperation essential to the production and distribution of the goods and services which we all need and all use. This element of cooperation and mutuality has become so basic in our daily life as we go about purchasing and using articles that are made by a cooperative system that we rarely stop to consider all of the implications but move forward instinctively to more cooperation when new problems present themselves. Cooperation in social action a hundred and more years ago developed machine production that largely overcame the hazard of want based on scarcity of goods. The same cooperation of individuals, men and money, rarely lies back of the building in operating of railroads, telephones, automobiles. Men found their answer to the needs of education by social and cooperative action in order to get schools, libraries, museums, fairs. The systems of life insurance, fire and accident insurance, which are commonplaces of today, are fundamentally extensions of the principle of cooperation and mutual and social action. Men pool small contributions in insurance funds and withdraw from that fund according to their special disaster and special needs. Not everyone is hit by the disaster, but all contribute. In a political democracy such as ours, functioning as it does within an economic society where machinery and systems of exchange make possible plentiful goods and a stimulating material and intellectual civilization, there is bound to develop a great awareness of individual problems and hazards within the social structure. Cooperation and mutuality being well-nigh compulsory in our ordinary economic life in order to get the goods we need, it becomes natural for us to use that same technique for handling each other's individual problems and hazards. The social progress and the social consciousness of the last twenty years in American life is largely the result of this deduced program of action. Government in a democracy is an instrument of cooperation and mutual service and has been hopefully used by the American people in this way for generations. Now the time has come, it seems to me, to apply this technique to the more obvious and individual economic hazards that still exist within our social systems. There are many hazards that the individual alone cannot provide against under the terms of modern life. Therefore, plans and provisions should be made by the community against these. And one of the challenges, of course, that goes out of our modern way of life is to affect the interplay of individual effort and social effort. But the plans for social security must be made effective in the beginning. The obvious and readily admitted economic problems of the individual life are involuntary unemployment, unprovided for old age, childhood without minimum financial safety, and dependency due to special physical handicaps such as blindness crippling and the like. There are others, of course, but these stand out accusingly in our modern civilization and challenge us to make a social plan that will provide individuals with a life net in case they are caught within one of these hardships which are all too common. No one of us knows on which one of us these hardships may fall, but certainly they will fall on some of us. Let us, therefore, use the old reliable means of cooperation and mutuality in which we all make contribution of some sort so that a systematic and orderly provision may be made as a matter of course for those of us who in the future suffer one or more of these afflictions. There has been a progressive feeling of public responsibility for these hazards which passing through the purely philanthropic stage, and we've seen a great deal of it in the last five years, now manifests itself in a growing demand and understanding of the need for practical and systematic assistance on a general basis for all of these handicaps. The security of the wage earner has become a definite matter of national concern, partly because it is seen that the economic health of the country depends on economic stability of the whole community and upon regular purchasing power of the lower-income groups who are so numerous who form the largest part of our population. The cost of insecurity in the loss of internal markets is a very large one. Either labor with no pay envelopes to spend or old people without normal purchasing power do not encourage the increase in the production and activity of our industries. Experience in many countries has shown that it is possible through the development of social insurance methods to check much of this waste and somewhat to stabilize internal markets even in a depression. The operation of the present Social Security Act and its development by experience will not only carry us a long way toward the gold economic security for the individual but also a long way toward the promotion and stabilization of mass purchasing power without which the present mass production system cannot permanently be maintained. The terms of this act provide the majority of our people with a substantial measure of security in infancy and childhood, in economic crises of working life, and in old age. It will be one of the forces working against the recurrence of severe depression in the future as the principle of sustained purchasing power in hard times makes itself felt through unemployment insurance and as regularity of spending by older people when they have passed their working age becomes a factor in our industrial planning for steady markets. Certainly, there is need of planning and of organized foresight to take care of these matters. The act which is just now going into effect has in its outlines recognizes and deals with a wide variety of social distress and maladjustments which has long been present in American life in times of plenty as well as in times of depression. The measure provides the present a modest degree of protection against the known hazard. It is reasonable, and if it is, it is in the direction of safety, of taking on only known problems and of making the original provision well within the capacity of our present business structure and our present business outlook. The growth of this program, a part of the present principles, will inevitably and naturally take place as a response to the experience that will only come of a fair and honest administration by conscientious officers. The Social Security Act provides, if I may take the time to outline what it is directly, provides federal grants in aid for old age pensions provided for in the states to those who are now both aged and indigent. The federal government will match states dollar for dollar, up to fifteen dollars per month by the federal government and any amount more which the state may be set to add in providing free pensions for all people who are without other means of support. The states must, however, comply with certain standards in order to get this federal grant in aid, certain standards in their old age pension administration and laws, including an age limit of sixty-five, although seventy is the usual rule today, and a residence requirement of not more than five years out of the nine years preceding application. Twenty-nine states already have old age pensions, but most, many of the state laws have to be revised in order to meet these standards. The same sort of assistance is given by federal grants in aid to the needy blind and twenty-eight states now make very, many of them inadequate provision for assistance to the needy blind. The bill also provides federal grants in aid for mothers' pensions where there is a dependent family without a dead winner. Forty-six states have pension laws for mothers with dependent children. But the funds are so inadequate that only about a hundred and nine thousand families in the United States are receiving regular mother's aid allowances under state laws, although there are three times that number of fatherless families now on the relief roll. The inadequacy of the state funds and the irregularity of their administration has been the cause of this anomaly. Under the Cousins Act, the states may secure federal aid of one-third of their total expenditure on fatherless families, up to eighteen dollars a month for one child and twelve dollars for each additional child in a household to enable mothers to take care of their own children at home. And this, of course, will be an extraordinary, a good extension of a principle of taking care of dependent children in their own homes. The act also provides grants in aid for child and maternal health care. It provides grants in aid for neglected and handicapped children. It provides grants in aid by the federal government of the state for health protection. The federal appropriation will be allotted to the states for strengthening their present public health services or developing public health services where they have none. This, of course, in the direction of preventing illness. The state also provides two other forms of social security which are in the insurance aspect rather than in the relief aspect. The act provides for compulsory old age insurance with under United States government supervision. The problem of the wage earner too old to be hired is growing yearly in size. Today, six percent of our population is sixty-five years of age and over. And by nineteen sixty-five, the percentage will be doubled. To prevent future old age dependency as far as possible, now is the time to set up a compulsory old age insurance program. Contributions to this are by employers and employers jointly. Beginning January 1, nineteen thirty-seven, a tax of one percent is levied on each payroll and upon wages up to three thousand dollars, increasing gradually to three percent. Benefits on a retirement at sixty-five are from ten to eighty-five dollars a month. Contributions under this title will prove no fearful burden on industry and the alternatives may be very expensive. The alternatives may be a great extension of the system of free pensions, not only to the needy but to all who want them. And we have seen enough in this country in the last year of movements of that sort to realize how overpoweringly expensive any such program would be. To give those people over sixty-five years of age thirty dollars a month now, those who are living now, to give them thirty dollars a month without regard to necessity would cost two and a half billion dollars annually under the tax budget, a good round bill to underwrite. Old age insurance by contribution will build up on a sound actuarial principle, a system of annuity through which those who have contributed can withdraw in proportion to their contribution when they become sixty-five years of age. As you know, the Stewie Act also provides for unemployment insurance by federal-state cooperation. Unemployment varies somewhat by locality and by state and for that reason it has been put upon a basis of cooperation between the federal and state government. The Social Security Act has devised what seems like a truly American plan based upon our method of administration and of government. Nine states and the Districts Columbia have already accepted the terms and are building up the necessary cooperating legislation. The method, as many of you know, is the application of a uniform federal payroll tax starting at one percent in thirty-six and rising to three percent in thirty-eight on every employer of eight or more persons throughout the country. If an employer contributes, however, to an approved state insurance system, the federal government credits him with such contributions, up to ninety percent of the tax, reserving only ten percent for administration. The method of benefits is less entirely to the state law. The states will decide how much and how long benefits ought to be paid. Administration is to be through state, through public employment offices also set up by a state-federal administrative agreement. No money can be spent, however, until the states pass laws which are approved by the Social Security Board and meet certain minimum standards. The principal arguments for planning for social security today seem to me to be these. First, it will promote economic stability for all of society. Second, it will reduce relief costs both regularly and in times of economic upheaval. Third, it will continue and build up our internal markets even during a depression. And fourth, it will encourage employers to plan their industries economic upheaval. Third, it will continue and build up our internal markets even during a depression. And fourth, it will encourage employers to plan their industries with the thought of the stabilization of employment. And sixth, it is just and gives to wage earners on low income opportunity to share in the security and peace of mind that civilization under a machine system ought to bring to all.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Now we're going to have another view on the question of social security by Mr. George S. Sikolsky, author, journalist, and industrial consultant. And now presents Mr. Sikolsky.
Ladies and gentlemen, I wish that in this holiday season I could be on the other side of this question. But unfortunately, I find myself driven constantly in all this discussion of economic problems and economic changes in this country to grow more and more conservative because things don't work out here and things don't work out in Europe. And when things don't work out, we had better watch our steps. The subject, should we plan for social security, puzzles me when my friend George Denny asked me to discuss it. Should who plan? The federal government? The state government? Individual employers? Or the individual himself? Who is the "we"? For instance, I am privately planning for my own and my family's social security, but I am certain that a discussion of that was not intended. Because even though that in the United States has been the normal procedure for a century and a half, again, the word "plan" puzzles me because these days everyone seems to have a plan, from Upton Sinclair's epic to Dr. Townsend's Carnival of the Dodgers. Curiously enough, all the plans look fairly sound on paper, particularly as they are all prepared by sincere persons who want to help humanity. But we must have more than sincerity. We must have a philosophy of action, a measure of conduct, so that we are not constantly to be shifted about from one theory of life and government to another. We want to know in which direction these plans are leading us. The people of every country today face the same political and economic problems. Everywhere, men and women are seeking for stability and security, not only in national existence but in their individual lives. Everywhere, the dangers of uncertainty, of insecurity, of the fear that comes from insecurity forces men and women not only to search for more perfect economic systems but even to question the wisdom of existing political structures. It is obvious that in a measure, perfect security can be achieved by reducing the entire population to a fixed caste stratification, as was done in India. There, each individual within his caste enjoyed complete security, but few enjoyed little else. But we cannot accept security at that cost, nor does anyone propose that we should hear. On the other hand, in Europe, it has been proposed, and it has been accepted, that for the sake of security, for the sake of intensified state efficiency, men should sacrifice all human rights, all liberties, won by centuries of human struggle for the single right of being assured a modicum of bread during the whole of one's existence. In many countries, war-ridden, post-war suffering individuals have actually paid that price for a government-promised security in Germany, Russia, Italy, and many other countries. All human rights have been concentrated in a political dictatorship, the individual subjecting himself to the whim and will of such leadership in the hope that only by such avoidance of the inefficiencies of democracy can security be achieved. Democracy in the capitalist system have their values, but they can never hope to be perfectly efficient nor to produce an utter equality. The very liberties which they guarantee produce a measure of waste and a measure of ineffective and even futile operation. The very nature of a profit-and-loss system in economics and of a town hall system of politics is predicated upon such a measure of lost motion. It is altogether possible that under dictatorship, perfect efficiency for the individual and for the collective citizenry of the state is possible. Under dictatorship, men can be forced into a virtual economic slavery with subsistence guaranteed by the state. They can eat, and as a matter of fact, their standards of living and time may be as high as ours, but they cannot hope to be free- may be as high as ours, but they cannot hope to free, be free, hope to differ, hope to consult, free to debate, as we are doing tonight. They must obey or go to a concentration camp. Can you imagine? Can, can you imagine a mere journalist debating a state problem with a cabinet officer in Russia or Germany or Italy? Human liberty, my friends, is a rare privilege, not lightly gained, nor is it to be sacrificed for bread alone. For without it, the guarantees, the secured bread becomes the wages of a driven slave. There are no poor, no unemployed, no indigenous. But I also want liberty. I want the human rights which my ancestors never enjoyed, but which to me are more precious than life. For without them, life is a conscience of crushing death. It is upon... It is upon this basis that I shall now devote myself to the specific plan for social security, the federal government's Social Security Act, passed by Congress, assigned by the President, and now the law of the land. When we talk of that, we have something very specific before us, pretty close to five billion dollars annually within the next fifteen years to be met by taxes which will produce increased prices, reduced profits, and possibly even reduced employment of labor. We need not be abstract or idealistic about this plan. It is here with us, and we have to face it. Curiously enough, one of the first obstacles we encounter in this plan arises from our form of government. Clearly, the right to provide for unemployment insurance rests with the state, but the federal government has the right to tax its citizens. The authors of this bill face their dilemma, which in time we must all encounter. They wanted to do something which they are not allowed to do. They got around their difficulty by a very simple device. They would tax all the payrolls of the United States, and then they would remit ninety percent of the tax if the burdened citizens could free their sti- could force their state legislatures to pass such an act as the federal government wanted passed. Here is a new principle of politics, a new departure from liberty. The federal government cannot coerce the states to pass a law, but it can offer the citizens of each state a base, a monetary base to have the law passed. Ninety percent of the federal tax is to be remitted if the state passes a law to conform to federal standards. The remaining ten percent remains with the federal government. But the federal government does not engage in the unemployment insurance business, except to make grants in aid as for administrative purposes to the state. The actual administration of the business is admittedly the function of the state. Therefore, the remaining ten percent has no function. It is either a clear profit for the federal government, a hidden form of taxation, or it is a service charge for coercion. But we go... But we go a step further. The federal government has set up certain standards for the state. The remission of the ninety percent to the citizens of each state are to be made, is to be made available only if the state has fulfilled certain requirements. These requirements give the federal government a control over state administrations not intended in our form of government. The theory of the act is that the state administration must be subject to the control of the Social Security Board. But the act does not guarantee that the states may not tax additional amounts, nor does it, as the Social Security Board clearly pointed out itself, prescribe the kind of unemployment compensation plan which the states must adopt, except for a few minimum standards. So that after an employer has paid one percent in nineteen thirty-six and two percent in nineteen thirty-seven and three percent in nineteen thirty-eight from thereafter on his payroll, the state can levy additional sums which are partly to be offset by the remitted ninety percent. There are no limitations upon the size of the state level, and it may vary in different states. How will the employer meet the federal unemployment and old age and state unemployment taxes, or separate taxes? Wherever he can, he will pass it on to the consumer. That makes of the measure a disguised sales tax. When, because of competitive prices or sales resistance or for other reasons, he cannot pass the tax on, he will take it out of profits, if any, or by increased mechanization, increased labor-saving devices, decreased employment. As profits are currently either small or merely prospective, many firms will immediately go out of business through this increased burden, thus increasing the danger of monopolistic enterprise in the United States. As seasonal or occupational labor, having much time, increases the tax bill of the employer, he will either avoid taking on new men or he will seek or proba- and probably find ways for increasing the work time of his current staff. In a word, nothing in the act itself encourages one to feel that it will lessen unemployment or benefits a small businessman. Here, the plan seeks to be so complete and perfect that it confuses its own objective. Again, I am moved to comment on the excluded classifications. Seven classes are excluded from both the tax and the benefit. A saxophone player employed in the nightclub would benefit, but a violinist of the philharmonic would be excluded. A nurse in Mount Sinai Hospital would be excluded, but a nurse in a private hospital would benefit. Farm labor and seamen would be excluded, but longshoremen would benefit. Surely, if the, if the objective is unemployment insurance, and in the other matter, old age pensions for those who labor, how can a distinction be made between one laborer and another? How can it be said that an elevator boy in the Empire State Building should enjoy the benefits this, of this act and an elevator boy here in the town hall should not? Yet the act says just that. Old age, according to the act, begins at sixty-five, and in the year nineteen forty-two. Therefore, our immediate problem, that is, seven and a half million persons of sixty-five and over today, of whom one million are now on release, is not solved except by relief measures, that is, grants in aid, different names, same thing. And the amount eventually to be paid as a pension is quite trivial. Wages paid in and after nineteen thirty-seven are the base. To get the maximum of eighty-five dollars a month, a man would have had to work forty-five years at a salary of two hundred and fifty dollars a month without interruption. No one, therefore, can possibly receive the maximum of eighty-five dollars a month until nineteen eighty-two, which is a long way off. To get any benefit even as low as ten dollars a month, a man must have worked five years after nineteen thirty-six, during which he received a total of two thousand dollars. The man who is now around the sixties, unemployed, and who does not get a non-governmental, non-municipal job, the lights are driving me, by nineteen thirty-seven may be permanently out of luck. No man who is now over sixty can qualify, because it is necessary to work five years before reaching the age of sixty-five after nineteen thirty-six. Those old folks must still go to the poorhouse or get released in some manner. Ladies and gentlemen, I've got to skip. I could nod in the few minutes that I've had, and I've skipped four paragraphs. Analyze this bill in detail. I have not touched on its financial setup, on the dangers of vast government reserves, and the concentration of liquid wealth in government bonds, on taxation problems, on the constitutional aspects of the bill. I had time only to deal with such phases of this measure as arose from my, this original premise, namely, does this bill endanger our liberties even if it does provide a greater economic security than now exists, which I deny? I think that I have indicated that its benefits are trivial, its administration confused. I have to leave that out, and its plan of uncertain advantage. But even if it were perfect, I could, would, should echo the words of William Green, President of the American Federation of Labor in the nineteen thirty-one convention. We can't have unemployment insurance without agreeing to a setup that will, to a large degree, govern and control our activities. You can't have it all one way. If you are to agree to submit considerations to this proposal and the operation of this plan, then you must be willing to give up some of the things you now possess. And what can we, Mr. Green is talking, give up? And yet maintain our movement? You can't have an employment insurance plan without employment exchanges. You can't have unemployment insurance plan without registration. You must report, you must subject yourself in every way to the control of the law. There must be, to make this system function efficiently, a car catalog of millions of names with hate histories. And all that would be necessary to make those car catalogs fully incisioned as in Germany would be a fingerprint added to it. But I go even further than Mr. Green and say to you, watch your individual liberties, taste out your human rights. We must in this country remain a democracy in which the federal government is the servant, not the master of the state and of the individual citizen. So, they'll give me a like. No fifteen dollars a month pension, nor even Doctor Townsend's two-hundred-dollar-a-month pension can concentrate us for the concentration of power in the federal government which these measures involve. We are naturally torn between two emotions. We despair at unemployment and hunger in old age, and yet we fear even more the consequences of government control of our lives, because we know the terrors of that. We must achieve a corrected distribution of wealth through a wider participation of the worker in the earnings of industry by constant employment for a higher standard of living and for an equalization of opportunity. But whatever we do, let it remain within the framework of a democracy of sovereign states and free individuals.
At this point in America's Town Meeting of the Air, we pause for station identification. Back in historic Town Hall in New York for a continuation of America's Town Meeting of the Air. Our moderator, Mr. George B. Denny Jr., will carry on. Mr. Denny.
Madam Secretary and Mr. Sikolsky. Town Hall is filled to capacity tonight, and I know that many of you here are eager to ask the Secretary and Mr. Sikolsky some questions. But before we get started, we've had several questions from the radio audience, and I'm going to ask just one of them, because that's about all we have time for. Madam Secretary, here's a question from Mr. Alex W. Johnson in New York City. Are not the payroll taxes levied against industry going to vitally affect the future potential rising of life insurance?
I don't, to know that I altogether understand the purpose of, uh, Mr. Johnson's question, but my impression would be that it would be contrary, would be true. There are very, there are all too few people who have themselves taken advantage of the private purchase of annuities uh, through the straight insurance companies. It would appear to me and to all of us who have examined these proposals that the granting of regular annuities to those who are covered by the, uh, by the, uh, official old age per- old age insurance system would encourage those who are not covered, those in the higher-income groups, to make provision for themselves by annuity. As for the purchase of straight life insurance, I can't see that it would have any effect one way or the other.
Now then, there are a number of written questions here, but let's have some of those verbal questions. If you arise, state your name, the person to whom your question is directed, and limit your question to twenty-five words. Question, please. That's it? Mr. Allmarten to Mr. Sikolsky. Yes?
We have, in this country, over a period of six years, facing the greatest crisis perhaps that ever faced any country in the world through two po- two political administrations, taking care of ten million unemployed and possibly between thirty and forty million people without losing our personal liberties and without destroying our structural cover.
Now, question.
Mr. Loz to Madam Secretary Parker.
Mr. Loz to Madam Secretary Parker.
Should not we merge all life insurance companies into a national system of living insurance, thereby guaranteeing life insurance savings of the people as bank deposits have been guaranteed?
Madam Secretary, should we merge all of our insurance into one great life insurance company, thereby ensuring security for all?
It could mean that that's a debate for another evening. It has nothing whatever to do with this country.
Question.
Madam Sec- Mr. Pico to Madam Secretary.
Mr. Pico to Madam Secretary.
The life insurance statistics show that the average man dies at the age of sixty, while you would give him a pension at the age of sixty-five.
These pensions are not for the average man, but for those who live until sixty-five and over and become a burden upon themselves, the community, their children, and other young people if they have no provision made for them. Those who die under sixty are, of course, uh, an unemployment. The reality is, and under the bill, you should know this, the contributions made by a person who dies before he becomes sixty-five years of age, uh, they go to his dependents, so that, uh, he, his dependents get the benefit of the savings he may have contributed to the system. Also, if after he begins to receive benefits, uh, he dies before he has received as much as he has paid in, uh, that, uh, balance also goes to his dependents.
Go back.
Mr. Sikolsky is afraid of, uh, losing his liberties if the millions of people in this country, uh, obtain social security. Uh, Great Britain has had social...
Legislation.
All right. Uh, will Mr. Sikolsky not admit that in Germany and Italy, the loss of liberties is due not to social security, but to the lack of it?
In Germany, they had one of the most scientifically worked-out plans for social security that the world has ever seen. And they've had a long experience with it since the days of Gismarck. I think that you misstated what I said entirely, and I can't let you get by with that. I never said that I am afraid that if millions have social security that we shall lose our liberties. I want millions to have social security, but I don't want to lose our liberties by having a concentration of federal power while we are finding for these millions a way to social security.
Question from the balcony. What's the name? Mr. Klaaske?
Uh, Mr. Sikolsky claims that the salvation of our people is then the final democracy.
Question.
Does Mr. Sikolsky honestly believe in democracy?
No, that's, that's a personal question. The man has given a fifteen-minute speech on that subject. Question. The man has given a fifteen-minute speech on that subject question.
Mr. Frank Bergman to Mr. Sikolsky.
Mr. Bergman to Mr. Sikolsky.
Are we compelled to accept the pessimistic conclusion that because the present American plan, as well as some of the European experiments, are impossible, that that ends the question? Is there no other ideal that we can find?
Mr. Sikolsky.
I'm very glad you asked that question, because we have our ideal, and we have it with us all the time. Where we fall down is that we're impatient, we're in a hurry, we don't realize what a tremendous task, not only we as a race, but each one of us as human beings, has actually made decade by decade as we move along, from the pre-capitalists, the poverty-stricken life that we knew wherever we started, to the high standard of living which we now have here in the world, even in times of depression everywhere and after a Great War. We're too impatient now that we have begun to see ways of achieving a high standard of living and a security, to put our methods into effect before we have thought them out, before we have worked them out, before we have discovered how to do them without at the same time destroying what we have already achieved. Even millions saw the wisdom occasionally of stepping back to go forward, and we don't have to step back as far as we do.
I'm glad to read one of these questions, if we had it, and a great many of them were handed in here. Miss Perkins, in enforcing the system of compulsory employer-employee old age insurance on a huge, complicated network of government supervisory agencies must be set up, agencies similar to those of the NRA, which broke down under their own weight. How will this difficulty be met in the administration of Old Age Insurance Act? Helen Rechek.
I think it will not be anything like the industry, as it is assumed in this question, uh, to have a network of complicated government agencies. Uh, it's, it is the method of administering insurance companies on a national basis or an international basis is fairly well-known, and the technique is very well-worked out. You have but to go into one of the large insurance companies and, uh, look at their methods of handling their records and handling their administration to realize that although it is complicated to those who don't understand it, it is simple to those who know how to work it, and that those who either pay their premiums and receive their benefits are hardly aware of the operation of the system of the life insurance company. So it will be for those who pay their premiums in old age insurance and receive the benefits when they are due. Many of us own or have bought already years ago annuities on a part-payment plan, and we are not aware of the complicated movements that are made by the insurance company back of the scene. We do know that we pay when we receive a bill, we get our benefits when they are due, and it's as simple as that. The administration will be on an extremely simple basis, uh, the only participation of the worker being, uh, his keeping of his number, uh, keeping in his own mind and in his papers, a record of his number on the file, so that he can be identified at age sixty-five as the same individual, whether he changes his name or dyes his hair or what he does, so that he can be identified as the individual who made the original constitution, just as you keep your, uh, your insurance policy as a record that you have actually made payments. I don't think that there will be anything like a confused or complicated system, and one should not look forward to that. Certainly, the present plan are being worked out with the advice of competent people who have had long and vast experience in large insurance practices.
Madam Secretary, here's one more question from Jim Turner, Chicago, Illinois. If the Old Age Pension Act becomes a law, what will be the exemption from a financial point? For instance, two old people having a small piece of property worth about five thousand dollars, but which couldn't be given away now, are depending on a single daughter who is sacrificing her life to look after this old couple. These people have denied themselves many things in the way of pleasures and even necessary things in order to have this property. What will be their exemption under this old age pension law?
Uh, you, I think we should remember, uh, and this also ought to have been said in answer to someone who asked about, uh, the sixty and sixty-five problem. We ought to remember that, uh, people who are now, uh, aged and indigent are covered by the Pension Act and not by the Insurance Act, and that the Insurance Act, of course, will affect only people who are now young or, as the insurance companies call it, half-old. Uh, that the Pension Act will apply to persons who are beyond the half-old age, uh, and will be eligible for pensions beyond any contributions they can have made. And that, of course, is the, uh, is what will be set up as security for those who are too old at the present time to build up by contribution into a, into an insurance fund, uh, the proper, uh, the proper offset to any payments that may be made to them. Uh, to an old couple who are depending upon a pension, uh, to see them, uh, through because they are aged and needy, uh, they will recover under the State Act, whatever it happens to be. Uh, most states have an exemption which permits that person to own, uh, free and fair property up to the value of three thousand dollars and still be eligible for a pension, uh, between those who administer, uh, that is, own real property of some sort or other up to the value of three thousand dollars. Those who administer the act in this particular state will have to determine with this particular old couple whether or not their piece of property is worth three thousand or five thousand, or whatever the exemption of that state is. If it is as, as described in the question, that it has no value, uh, they will, of course, be permitted to, uh, no sale value, permitted to keep it and be eligible for a pension.
I know you won't believe that the hour is up, but it is. I'm sorry we haven't time to answer all the questions, but we hope you will continue your discussions among yourselves. On behalf of our audience here and our unseen audience throughout the country, may I thank you, Madam Secretary and Mr. Sikolsky, for your kind contribution to the discussion this evening? And now, may we hear from Mr. Habrillah.
You have just heard the eighth meeting in a series of twenty-five weekly discussions known as America's Town Meeting of the Air, presented to you through the joint cooperation of the League for Political Education and the National Broadcasting Company. Would you like copies of tonight's broadcast, or of any of the others in this series? By arrangement with one of America's leading publishing houses, these broadcasts may be obtained at the nominal cost of ten cents. If you will write directly to the League for Political Education, The Town Hall, 123 West Forty-third Street, New York, write to the League for Political Education, The Town Hall, 123 Forty-third Street, New York City. Copies of the earlier broadcasts are obtainable at the same price, or you may send one dollar for any ten. Next week at this hour, we will depart from our usual custom of discussing political topics, when Professor William Lyon Phelps of Yale University, Christopher Morley, Fanny Hurst, Francis Talbot, T.S. Tribbling, Mrs. Audrey Wordeman, and Mrs. Joseph Alslander will meet on this platform to discuss the topic, "Literature and Life." Your announcer is Deloitte Habrillah. This is the National Broadcasting Company.